We got the thumbs up from the back. I think we're online, ready to roll. We had a little weather that moved through here a few minutes ago and knocked out the power. Otherwise, we would have gotten started a little early at about 5:30 today. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. If I could ask you to all please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Phil Quarles of Redeemer Lutheran Church. I will ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pray. Lord God, as I pray for all who are in authority, I thank you especially for the form of government given us in our beloved country. Give me the grace with my fellow citizens to value the officers and the magistrates of our government as those sent by you. Instill in me that respect and honor that is due them. Lord, endow them with wisdom for their several duties, with the spirit of sacrifice for the common welfare, with mercy and justice, with uprightness and kindliness. Correct the evils of selfishness, greed, a vain desire for honor, or abuse of power among us, as well as in the other governments of the world. Grant that the true purposes of government may prevail, safeguarding peace and prosperity, so that we may live soberly and uprightly in your sight and have opportunity to tell of you and your kingdom. These petitions I direct to you because in Jesus I know you as my Father and Lord. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Quarles. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, first order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the work session held on June 9th, and also to approve the minutes of the special called city council meeting of June 17th. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to these minutes?
Make a motion when you approve the minute that says presented.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, those minutes are approved. Item two is a resolution for the appointment of our municipal judge, the Honorable Hames Snedeker. I'll read this resolution. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Hames Snedeker is hereby appointed as municipal judge. The term of the municipal judge shall serve a two-year term, July 1st, 2025 to July 1st, 2027, and until a successor is elected by the council and qualified." This is, I see this section from the Code of Alabama adopted this 23rd day of June 2025. I'll entertain a motion for the appointment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? How many years would you be entering, Judge?
Nineteen. I think this will be twenty-one and twenty-two.
Really?
That's why I'm a judge, I'm not.
You were like fifteen years old then, right? When you started?
Jerry was born right before I started, or no, right after I started, and he's turning nineteen in July, so you're right, you were about two years ahead of me in twenty-two.
Well, okay, let's vote on this, and I think that the judge will probably say a few words. I'd like for him to say a few words after the ceremony, so there being no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. The Honorable Michael Hoyt is here to swear in Judge Snedeker again, so.
Can I come up to the front here? Can I say a word myself? Of course. It has appeared to be Mr. Judge, and it was a highlight of my career to serve as an active district court judge for twelve years, and unfortunately was elected in November as a district court judge, and took office in January, and I've enjoyed that and I'm honored. Hames asked me to come here and swear in to the Minister of Hope of office, saying I practiced as a lawyer in front of Hames, and I can tell you, there's no current district court judge. That's the caveat for Warren.
And there was a partner.
As a district court judge. Of course, this is, this company excluded, but Hames does a fantastic job for the city. He represents the city honorably, he conducts court very professionally. Other than, there's no department in the city, I don't think it has any more interaction with the public than the district court judge. That's the face of government, face of city government. You have somebody great like Hames doing that as a testament to the city. And I say that with a caveat that you'll probably see more people if you have a library familiar with the county. Other than that, a city court judge should see more people. Thank you, Hames. I appreciate it.
He said the library.
I see where you're coming from, here. Place your left hand on the dial, raise your right hand, get after me, I, Hames Snedeker, Solomon Square. But I will support the Constitution of the United States. I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of LA. The Constitution of the State of LA. So long as I continue, so long as I continue, a citizen thereof, a citizen thereof, that I will faithfully and honestly, I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office, discharge the duties of the office upon which I am appointed, and I will do my best with my ability, with my time, so help me God. Congratulations on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, if I may say just a few words, I want to thank Judge Hoyt for coming down here and swearing me in. We've known each other a long time, and like you said, it's a, we've got a good group of judges around here, and it's a, it's a, it's really great to pick up the phone and call people like Michael and Marcus and other judges. It's a close-knit group, but we, we keep each other in line and try and do what's best for the city and the people in the county, so thank you for doing that. I know it's inconvenient. I want to thank the mayor for the recommendation again for reappointment, and thank all of you guys for, for accepting that recommendation, putting me back on for another term. It has been, and I've told each of you, it's probably, it's not probably, it is probably the greatest privilege that I've had in my life to do outside of just being a father and, you know, a member of society. It's just trying to give back in a way that, that I, that I was raised, and we've done a great job here, but I don't, I say this every time, I don't do this alone. I've got Barry McElvein, Teresa Moyer's, and Paige Stabler, who do all the hard work. They really do. It's, it's, I show up and they have everything prepared. We have a great team, cohesive, they're thoughtful, they're supportive, and above all else, they care about the people of Fairhope, and they care about the defendants. It's not, we don't have a court, and I think you would agree, that's set up in a penal nature, although there are consequences. We've become more, unfortunately, or fortunately, more like drug courts and counseling, and we try to get people help, and that's kind of the direction we've headed in, and I've got a great team, so the accolades that, that Michael bestowed on me are really just a reflection of the team that's in, in, in office. So you guys have supported us, I can't thank you enough. The door's always open, I look forward to serving the city in this capacity as long as you'll have me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Judge Snedeker.
Thank you.
Thank you Judge Hoyt.
Thank you Marcus.
Next item on tonight's agenda will be the report of Mayor Sullivan. Your report, please.
Thank you. I was just over there thanking our city clerk, because she's the one that really keeps us in line. She's the one that let us know that it was time to reappoint Judge Snedeker, so I thank Lisa for that, helping me make that recommendation to the council. She's the one that always keeps us in line. So just a few things I want to cover, things that you probably heard in my Monday morning video, if anybody had got to watch that, but really what I want to focus on is the road closures. I know all of us are tired of seeing detour signs and seeing the orange signs. The project that we're doing on Section Street, there's a couple things going on. Obviously, the roundabout, we've got Veterans Drive closed, we've got Triangle Drive closed for about three weeks, getting the curbing and all done there. We also have a closure on Section Street between Oak and Bayou tomorrow. That is to tie in the last phase of the Forest Main for the Restore Project, which is a large upgrade of our wastewater system. So that will be happening. You'll see tomorrow that the area on Section from Oak to Bayou will be closed, then we'll have Bayou closed, then further up, in about a week or so, maybe ten days, you'll see another section of, of Section closed, and again, that is all Forest Main related. We have visited with all the businesses along that area, made sure we add some additional signage to let folks know that the businesses and residents along there will remain open, but it's going to be inconvenient for about six weeks. We're doing this now so we can make sure we get out of the way when school starts, so we don't inconvenience them. But again, if you're coming into town, I would say use Gafer, if you want to visit some of those businesses along, near Gafer on Section Street. You can go north or south, but then you'll have to go back out Gafer, because you will not be able to go down Bayou or come back into town. If you're coming into town and you want to come to downtown or to like City Hall, you're going to want to use Fairhope Avenue, Morphe, or Nichols to come into town. Again, this is for six weeks, and we do hope that we can get that done in that six-week period, because we want to get out of the way by the time school starts. None of us like the road closures, obviously, but they are necessary to do this infrastructure work, which we've all made a priority for the past four and a half years.
Mayor, will there be any detour signs if you're coming up Section Street to maybe detour? I'm just making this up, I don't know if you guys have thought about it, you know, detour, maybe go east on, on Gafer and then hit, hmm, trying to think of how you could get back to Fairhope Avenue, I guess maybe Ingleside.
You're going to use Ingleside, Fairwood, you're going to use any of those roads off of Gafer.
Yeah.
Patlin, you're going to use Patlin to hit Fairwood to come back into town, or you can hit Ingleside.
Will there be signs there though?
There's going to be signs everywhere, kind of directing people.
You want to get some visitors that are going to get lost.
You will. The other thing I want to remind everybody is that I have talked to the chief a couple times, want to make sure people are being very respectful of those neighborhoods, Valana, Ingleside, Gafer, those are the areas that we get most of our complaints about speeding. So I want to remind people, as you're having a detour through these residential areas, please be respectful of those areas, respect the speed limit, know that we're going to have additional law enforcement out, they're going to be enforcing the speed limit laws, but again, just be respectful of those areas. There's, it's summer, children are out, so you want to be mindful of that.
Yes.
Okay? Again, it's for six weeks, bear with us, okay? And then the other thing I want to mention is Fourth of July. Of course, it's coming up before we meet again, so we will have the Baldwin Pops concert down on the bluff, we will have the pier area open for the fireworks, we'll have the circle open, so people will be able to drive down, drive down, and then drive the circle and then go back up, because we have a lot of people who just like to do that all day on Fourth of July, they just like to ride down there and see what's going on and then leave. But I will remind you, it is still partially a construction zone, the south end will not be open, but the circle, at some point that afternoon, will close, and it will be for pedestrians only. That will be where people sit with their lawn chairs and are able to watch the fireworks. The pier will remain open for most of the day, it will close later that evening when we get ready to do the fireworks, because in case we have to get emergency personnel out there, we need the pier clear, so be mindful of that also. We'll be putting all that information out on social media, so be looking for that, or if you have questions, please call before the Fourth of July, because obviously the city is closed that day. Also, we are hosting the state eight U baseball tournament this weekend at Valana, so real excited about doing that, we'll have a lot of visitors to town, we are making sure we put up additional signs so they know where to go, but, because there's going to be a lot of orange signs they're going to see, but excited to be able to do that, excited to be able to showcase Fairhope and bring those teams to town, and so if you're looking for some good baseball, I would say go out to Valana this weekend and catch a game. I think that's all, thank you.
That was eight U, Mayor? Eight U, thank you. Okay. Thank you for that report, Mayor Sullivan. Next item on the agenda is public participation for agenda items only. If you'd like to address the council on items six through nineteen, if you'll come to this, to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you will be given three minutes, and I will remind you that if you have anything that's not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to bring forth before the council, you will be given an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So open public participation for agenda items only. Hearing none, I will close public participation for agenda items, and we will move to council comments. Councilman Martin?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Councilman Conyers?
No comments tonight.
Councilman Robinson?
I do. The eight-year-old district tournament, or state tournament that Mayor Sullivan just referenced, I'd like to say congratulations to all of our local All-Star teams that played in their district tournaments the last week or so. I've seen all these age groups from, from six U all the way up to twelve U practicing at Valana, and they really represented us across the board really well in these tournaments. Eight U specifically, both the big park and small park teams won their respective district champion, championships, and as a reward are obviously getting to host the eight-year-old state tournament this weekend. My twelve-year-old All-Star team also won the district championship this past weekend, and our reward is we get to go to Childersburg, Alabama. So, so just, just look out for these teams, come, come watch, come support the eight-year-olds at Valana this weekend, pray for good weather, and I just want to say congratulations to all those kids and those coaches, because a lot of work goes into that, a lot of time goes into that, and it's really awesome to see these kids do so well and be such good representatives of the city of Fairhope when they do it.
Councilman Boone?
I don't have any comments, other than, Jay, I don't know if we've ever said this up here, but thank you for all your involvement with the youth and all you do, you've been, you've dedicated a lot of your time, along with others here, Councilman Martin with sports and everything else, you can name it, mentorship, so that means a lot, so thank you for that, and keep up the good work. Good luck in the state.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any further comments, so I will close council comments, and we'll move right onto the agenda with item six, whether, which is a resolution to award a bid to Chris Brewer contracting for new sidewalks on Blue Island Avenue and Fairwood Boulevard, excuse me, between Fairhope and Gafer avenues with bid proposal not to exceed $695,800. This is a federal aid project, also known as a TAP project. So I do have one question, Mr. Johnson, will they start on these sidewalks within the next six weeks? We're going to have a lot of traffic, I don't want them to mistake them for a road through there. With everybody being diverted to that street, you did talk about it, yeah, it's concerned.
The good news is, this is all shoulder work, this won't, you know, and I told the mayor, the biggest thing is, the only time there'd be any short-term traffic control is, you know, when the actual concrete truck is there in the lane unloading concrete, and we're going to cover that pretty detailed in the pre-construction, but usually when you award a bid, it's about thirty days before we have a pre-construction notice proceeding and all that, so, yeah, it's gonna, there's going to be a lot going on that affects it, we're going to just have to manage that.
So and the Fairwood is going to be off on the side of this, one of the streets, it's not going down the middle, is it?
In Fairwood, majority of it starting at Fairhope Avenue is in the median.
That's what I, okay, that, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Yeah, but we're talking about, this is just simple grade work, so it's a mini excavator and a crew, we will manage that and we'll make sure, and as Mayor and talking, when school gets back in, there can be no, no blockage before, before school lets in, and has to be, all blockages have to be off the road before school lets out, so we'll, we'll manage that, but yes, it's going to be a little sporty in there.
Gotcha. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say for all of these items, we covered every item on the, on the agenda in the work session, so if it seems like we're moving a little hurriedly, probably because we are. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Neil Schaefer for professional engineering services for construction engineering and inspection for the FY 2023 TAP project sidewalks on Blue Island Avenue and Fairwood Boulevard with a not-to-exceed contract amount of $119,276.53. This is also a federal aid project, now this is so-called the TAP grant, I would say that we have a 20% match, 80% of the cost is a TAP grant. I also wanted to mention for both of the items six and seven, that we were under budget by about $185,000, so. If you, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item eight is a resolution, the city council declares the Marathon Gemini Extreme Full-Eject and Rear Feed Baylor Surplus, and the Public Works Director is authorized and directed to dispose of the personal property by donating such property to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority of Baldwin County. This donation will help the city continue its support of the new material recovery facility, the MRF. Also, we'll say that this has been sitting in our warehouse for about five years, so it'd be nice to put this to work. This is going to be used for recycling materials, and they will be also opening a recycle facility that's going to be on the east side of the Fairhope Courthouse on July the 17th is the opening date for that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to declare it surplus and dispose of it.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item nine is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of boring machine replacement rods from Burmier Southeast Sales and Service as sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, therefore is not required to secure three quotes. The total amount is not to exceed $24,836.55. We authorize the treasurer to transfer from the gas department $6,209, and the electric department $6,209. Entertain a motion to approve the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right. Item ten is a resolution, and it's probably going to win the award for most words for the least amount of action, but do we have any additional language to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will read it, and then we will, do we want to amend this?
You want me to read it?
Yes, please. Yes, so we're going to ask for an amended resolution, and, and I'm going to have the city attorney, Mr. McDowell, read the, you're going to be reading just the additional language?
Additional language on the end will be future pricing, future price increases that require multiple quotes as per city policy are approved up to a total cost increase of 10% of the initial awarded contract amount. Any increase above the total bid award shall be rebid pursuant to state law. So that's, anything over that 10%, it's got to go back, anything that's under that 10% where they feel it's necessary to get additional quotes based on any kind of increased unit price or whatnot, they can do that, get the quotes, and they're already pre-approved to do that, up to an aggregate of 10% of the initial.
They're pre-approved to get the quotes? Are we pre-approved to spend the money, to award the quote?
Award it.
Yes, we want to award that quote, too.
I see, approved. Any, any price increases that require multiple quotes as per city policy are approved up to a total cost of 10% of the initial awarded contract amount.
You got it. I got it. Perfect. Okay. All right, and I'm sure you'll go back and watch the video and get all that language.
We'll give it to you.
You got it? Okay. So I will go ahead and ask to, and that, is that same language going to be used on item ten and eleven?
Yes, sir, it can, if that's the same type increase.
Yes, yes, the same exact ones.
Copy that increase or copy that amendment on eleven as well.
So I want to ask to amend item ten, the resolutions on item ten and eleven, to include the language read by City Attorney McDowell.
Yeah, you need to make a unanimous consent on those, for that motion, for those.
I'd like to just take a vote, have a motion second, and vote on those.
I will make a motion to amend items ten and eleven with the language that Al just used.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none on the motion for amendment of the two resolutions, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, so items ten, so I'm going to read what we have for ten, and I'm going to say in addition to Attorney McDowell's language, because I don't have that in front of me. Item ten's a resolution, Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for materials for the 46 KV Transmission Line Project Base Bid and Alternate Two for the Electric Department, and to award change order number one to Gresco Utility Supply with a cost change of minus $35,104.30, and Tri-State Utility Products with a cost change of minus $20,338.40. Change order is for requested price or quantity changes, requested line item changes of greater than 10% is caused to rescind award for that line item. The new contract total for Gresco Utility Supply is $590,736.5, and the new contract total for Tri-State Utility Products is $8,538.70. Total award to three vendors with contingency will be changed to $746,902.70. The rescinded items will be bid out as requests for quotes, and then add the language this Mr. McDowell read for the resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to execute these. All right, any further discussion? Thanks for bearing with us on that, to get that right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the amended motion passed, thank you. Okay, item number eleven is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for materials for the 46 KV Transmission Line Project, Alternate One for the Electric Department, and to award change order number one to Gresco Utility Supply with a cost change of $7,622.81, and Tri-State Utility Products with a cost change of negative $3,443.40. The change order is for requested price or quantity changes, requested line item changes of greater than 10% is caused to rescind award for that line item. The new contract total for Gresco Utility Supply is $351,723.85, and the new contract total for Tri-State Utility Products is $482. Total award to three vendors with contingency will be changed to $480,627.43. The rescinded items will be bid out as requested for quotes, and add the language previously quoted by Attorney McDowell to this resolution as well. So I'll entertain a motion for the amended resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, great job, council. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Lisa. Item twelve is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual renewal of unity fiber connections contracts that are on a statewide, statewide contract, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, the total amount not to exceed $940 per month, or $11,280 per year. This is just a routine expense, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for the procurement. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item thirteen is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the Toro NSN Irrigation Subscription Renewal for the Quail Creek Golf Course that is on the Omnia Partners contract with Jerry Pike Turf and Irrigation, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, the total amount not to exceed $10,392. And I'll remind you all that that is a 36-month term, that comes out to $336 per month. I think there was no price increase since the last procurement of this, so I'll entertain.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the procurement?
Any further discussion?
Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item fourteen is a resolution that on May 12th, 2025, the City of Fairhope did award Shade America with a total bid proposal of $137,600 to provide and install 16 T-Hip Canty shade structures at Valana Sports Park. A notice of award was presented to Shade America, and the vendor has not submitted all required documentation, and after evaluating the bid proposals with required bid specification, the City of Fairhope now rescinds bid number 25-30 from Shade America and awards the bid to the second lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Great Southern Recreation, for a not-to-exceed project amount of $187,298. And in the work session, we found out that it's been at least 60 days, and we tried to get the, the original low bidder approved, and to get their license in, and then they have been unresponsive, so we got to get this moving, so. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid to the second responsive bidder.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?[1741.73] Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to temporarily suspend lease payment terms during July and August 2025 due to the impact of the ongoing waterfront revitalization program. The amended terms shall commence July 1st, 2025 and terminate August 31st, 2025. All terms not specifically amended herein shall remain in full force and effect. The original lease payment terms shall return to the agreed-upon amount starting September 1st, 2025. Of course, this is in relation to the lease with the Blind Tiger at the Fairhope Pier.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Item 16 is a recommendation from the rec. Board that the city council approves the recreation board's recommendation to accept the Fairhope Heat Swim Team's proposal and use of the fees that the city has in place, subject to review and approval from city staff. And this was discussed in the work session by Mr. White, so I'll entertain a motion to approve their recommendation.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, please say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 17 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Scott Hudson, doing business as The Bone and Barrel at 311 Fairhope Avenue in Fairhope. Chief, you're here to tell us everything is good with this application. No reason to deny? Okay, and I know by now that it wouldn't be on the agenda if there was a reason, right? All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the restaurant liquor license. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 18 is appointment to the Fairhope Airport Authority. These appointments are nominated by the mayor and the Fairhope Airport Authority unanimously recommended to the mayor the appointment of, if I can get to that sheet, of Mr. Ronald Holyfield to fill the unexpired term of Mitch Scrimetta. The term shall end March 31st. That can't be right. It's 2021. Yeah, that's probably not it. It's March 2031 if I go back to the next page. Yeah. So, term ending March 31, 2031. So, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think this guy do a really great job on the airport authority, been, been in his community all his life and a big level-headed, very smart businessman. He'll be a good asset to the airport authority. All right, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, Mr. Holyfield is appointed. Thank you very much. Next item is an appointment to the Personnel Board. This would be to appoint Ms. Stephanie Sandifer to the Personnel Board for a five-year term, a term ending on December 2030. And Ms. Sandifer was here earlier at the work session, so I'll entertain a motion for the appointment.
So moved. Second.
We have two motions in two seconds. Any further discussion?
No.
I didn't get to do anything. All is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Last item on tonight's agenda is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you'll state your name and address for the record, we'll give you three minutes. Are you speaking as the mayor or a citizen?
I am speaking as the mayor and a citizen, and a citizen. Cherry Sullivan, 419 Barclay Avenue, Fairhope. I just wanted to say, one person that we haven't thanked or one group that we haven't thanked for all the work and effort they put into these baseball tournaments is Pat and his staff. The employees have to do a lot, a great deal of work to get ready for these tournaments. There's a whole laundry list of things that they have to do to host these tournaments and just want to thank them for all their time and effort that they put in and the overtime that they work and just getting the parks ready and everything. So, just didn't want to leave them out and thank them for their effort. Thank you.
You know, something else I was thinking about, and I'll just go ahead and say it now, was that it used to be very rare that we had state tournaments. And, you know, because of the efforts of the rec. Department, your efforts and Jay's efforts and Cory's and whomever else is, is, you know, responsible for that. We, we've, it's not so uncommon to have state tournaments and that's, that's a great thing. So, thank you for that, Pat. Appreciate that. All right, the floor is still open for public participation. If we have anybody else, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, please say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.